I forgot, Mike.
All right. All right, we are back in session. Where did we leave off? Thank you for your patience.
No, did you want to redo that presentation?
No.
We are now at the portion of our agenda where it's called to audience. Please come to the podium if you have something that you want to share, state on or off the agenda, and please state your name and address when you do that. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Phil Lombard. I live on West Strayton Avenue. I'm here to briefly bring up vehicular noise and how it affects my family in our neighborhood. I started by writing to the mayor a couple of weeks ago, no answer, a week ago, no answer, so I thought I'd just bring it to the whole board here. There's a tremendous amount of noise at night, you know, after I go to bed, you hear people zooming up and down Woodward Avenue and 696. And it's really affecting my quality of life. I haven't queried all my neighbors to see how they deal with it, but last night was another great night, some hot rod. And this is all generally motorcycles with non-stock mufflers. This is the kind of cars that have the switchable cutouts for their exhaust systems. Very occasionally, it's stereos in cars going up and down our residential street. Really, the lion's share of it is vehicular noise from motorcycles and automobiles having fun on Woodward Avenue and 696 late at night. And I would ask that maybe you guys could consider doing something, working with the police department and other places. I know PR and Royal Oak, they've got noise zones, so they're trying to do something with it, and I've spoken to the state police as well. So anyway, that's about it. Thanks, bye.
Before you leave, Mr. Lombard, did I hear you say that you emailed the mayor?
Yes, the last Friday in July and the first Friday in August. And I used the city of Ferndale's blue button to send the mayor to.
I apologize to you because I'm not seeing it, but thank you, thank you for letting me know.
Howdy, Dave Cottrell from 1610 Bowfield. Probably just three different items. Thanks for fixing the microphones, but I've always noticed how, yeah, the microphone is strategically placed to be pretty far away from the speaker here, and it's a lot of times, it is difficult to hear the people on council. And sometimes, yes, you're, you know, talking kind of amongst yourself and I really can't hear. Thanks for Joe trying to fix this problem today. It's, I think your microphones really need to just be extended out towards each of you. When Greg was talking about, yeah, prices generally going up, except they didn't in 2008, the way the prices in Ferndale have been going up, like some houses like $600,000, what for. I think we're probably, the prices will keep on going up until they don't, just as in 2008. So there's a lot of great price inflation, and we probably should also prepare for price reductions in housing. And then regarding Phil Lombard's question, I know State Rep Natalie Price is trying to work in the State House regarding a noise kind of reduction ordinance. At least if a car is modified, so it becomes noisier, then it might become, like that might become illegal, and we could reduce the noise. Of course, I would love to have Woodward Dream Cruise completely shut down and not have one, and that we would be discouraging all the noise for the whole summer. But, you know, I'll keep on trying to do that. So, okay, those are my comments. Thank you.
Hi, hello Mayor, City Council, and attendees. I just have a question. I attended the lunch with Joe this weekend and saw a lot of great ideas for the new fire station and for the new police station and for the new parks building. I just had a quick question about the property that we're purchasing from the Comerica Bank. I know that the price is over $1 million. Have we had that assessed or priced out to make sure it's been, that we're buying it at a competitive value? Does anyone know? Just bringing that up.
Through the chair, I will be addressing that on the regular agenda.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Michael Larry, the Director of Special Events for the City of Ferndale. Want to announce that this Friday and Saturday is the 29th Annual Woodward Dream Cruise, presented by Ford Motor Company. It is a family fun automotive event featuring here in Ferndale, the 25th Annual Mustang Alley Show, the 23rd Annual Ferndale Emergency Vehicle Show with Lights and Silence Cruise Parade, the Rockin' Live Entertainment Stage, and the official Woodward Dream Cruise ribbon-cutting ceremony. Plus, we'll also have the Michigan Motorsports Racing Association's Quarter Midget Youth Racing Custom Cars on display, and of course, we will also include the Kids Play Zone, vendors, and food court. And this will all take place in downtown Ferndale on Nine Mile, both east and west of Woodward. As for street closures, for Friday, the street will be closed from Allen Road to Leland. And then on Saturday, for the big show Mustang Alley, the official day of the Woodward Dream Cruise, it will be closed from Plantahabon to Hilton Road. However, weather doesn't always, you know, we can't always make our decisions on how we'd like it, as it is a beautiful day today. There is a chance of rain, so it's possible that some things might be either delayed or they might have to be canceled. We will determine that as we get closer to the day of the first day of the event, which would be Friday. So anyway, I hope everybody's able to attend. You can always go on our website, www.ferndaledreamcruise.com, for more information and details on the schedule. And as for the bike lanes, Police Chief, would you like to make a comment? Sure.
I was originally going to say for call to council, but since there's an opening, police officers will be out in full force. We'll have the whole department working on Friday and Saturday. Just a reminder to the public and to our visitors that the bike lanes will be reserved for the bicycles. It's not an opportunity to move chairs or tents or any other object into those bicycle lanes. Our officers will be on bicycle themselves, traversing those lanes and making sure that they stay open for people who want to visit Dream Cruise on bicycles. As for the medians, there's no tents in the medians and no grilling or cooking in the medians, but you will be allowed to sit a chair in the median. Just remember, do not throw anything into the roadway. Do not throw bleach on the roadway. And there will be zero tolerance for reckless driving, as always. And a special order from the Sheriff's Office is that there is a restriction prohibiting vehicles over 10,000 pounds from traveling on Woodward Avenue that weekend. And they'll be routed off of Woodward Avenue to the nearest mile, nine, or nearest mile road. So if there's any other questions, I can address them at call to council.
Any other? All right. We're now closing call to audience and moving on to the consent agenda. Item 7A, approval of the July 22nd, 2024 meeting minutes. 7B, renewal of the 2024-2025 contract with the city's Comprehensive Freedom of Information Act Tracking and Response Software. Next request in the amount of $9,247.77. 7C, approval of the payment to Sinclair Recreation LLC in the amount of $48,382 for a pavilion structure and cantilever to be placed at Martin Road Park. 7D, approval of the special event permit for the DIY Street Fair to be held September 20th through the 22nd, 2024. 7E, approval of the special event permit for the Funky Ferndale Art Fair to be held on September 20th through the 22nd, 2024. 7F, approval of the special event permit for Ferndale Hispano on September 7th, 2024. 7G, approval to amend the agreement for local fiscal recovery fund distribution between Oakland County and the City of Ferndale for infrastructure planning. 7H, approval of bills and payrolls as submitted by the Finance Director and subject to review by the Council Finance Committee. We'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mikulski?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Now we are moving on to the regular agenda. Item 8A will be the consideration of the purchase agreement with Comerica Bank to acquire the real property located.
We moved it. Yeah, she's, we moved it. Purchases first, we switched them to purchase.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought C was A. Okay, sorry.
Consideration of a purchase agreement with Comerica Bank to acquire the real property located at 1,000 East Nine Mile Road in the amount of $1.325 million. Our city manager will be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Give me one moment, please. Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are here tonight. I will keep.
Is that microphone working?
Thank, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's really low, though.
Okay. Hopefully, if staff can let me know if IT says anything about it not working, let me know, please. Okay, Mayor and Council, we are here tonight. I will be presenting a brief presentation and leaving more room for discussion and questions. With me tonight is our Realtor, Matt Isseki through CBRE. He has a long-term relationship with the City of Ferndale in real estate advisement. The title of this presentation really speaks to the outcome goal, and that is to develop a public safety headquarters near the current existing facility of Fire Station 2. To do so would require acquisition of this parcel, Comerica Bank, which is a former Comerica Bank property located at 1,000 East Nine Mile Road. The parcel to the northeast property right there is the Fire Station 2 that's existing. Property profile is at 1.07 acres. It is Zone C2 along East Nine Mile, approximately one block away from the Hilton intersection. Comerica actually acquired the property in the late 60s and constructed a bank there in 1967. Parcel does include the branch itself. And what many people have commonly thought was owned by the city is the Fire Station parking lot. That actually is a parking lot owned by the bank in the southeast corner of the property, as you see. So why purchase the property now? The biggest principle is that it's listed, and it's very unusual for a commercial property to be listed adjacent to a city-owned property like this. In that case, the red parcel is the city's Fire 2, and the yellow is the Comerica Polygon. In 2022, the Facility's Task Force identified improving public safety conditions, facility conditions, as the top priority. And the resident actually had made a recommendation that should this become an opportunity, the city could pursue it and then consolidate our public safety facility operations by folding in your police department, your dispatch center, and then your fire command operations, which are currently housed in Fire Station 1. You would move that command operation over to this facility. So that is the two reasons really, is the timing of the listing. We were beholden to the real estate process, and then the strategic opportunity for the city. Property became available in March 2024. We submitted a competitive bid. Comerica listed a grouping of properties. They're consolidating many of their branch offices as they moved their corporate, regional corporate headquarters to Farmington from Detroit. They're consolidating a lot of their properties. We did ask them to delist this property from that pooled property. It is pretty common for a bank to list properties in a pool once they're disposing of multiple assets, and then to allow investors to bid on those properties as a pooled property. In this case, they pulled the property out and allowed Ferndale to bid on it individually. Some of the drawings were featured in my public engagement session for the first time on Saturday, and they're actually located in the back of council chambers. We will be featuring these drawings in public facilities for the next few months just to get general public awareness and engagement out there. But the, as I had mentioned, the biggest objective here is to address deficiencies in our public safety facilities by combining them and actually establish new efficiencies by eliminating duplicate services that both public, police and fire departments use. This is just a conceptual drawing. I want to be clear about that. So some of the comparative sales that we were able to obtain have been put together in this table to illustrate kind of where the market has been on commercial branches, bank branches that are being disposed of. The table identifies the branch location, the year built. Really, I'm focusing on total area square footage. That's what the city's interested in, because we're not interested in running a bank. We're interested in acquiring this property and redeveloping it for a public interest. And then you look at the sale comps, which are more based on the facility square footage and the institutional use, and then we look at the cash equivalent. So in this instance, you notice the way really the only local government buyer, other buyers are credit unions, who are typically trying to purchase these older bank properties to get into new markets, or by investment groups, which is pretty common to acquire an asset for either redevelopment or for some other strategic financial purpose. The city did obtain an appraisal today, and that appraisal was appraised for $882,000. So we do believe that that is probably a lower appraisal. But what we do have a decision point today, really, for council, is a purchase agreement for the listed price. The purchase agreement would enable the city to have some guarantee on access to purchasing the property. What I would recommend, if council approves that, is that pending that approval, I order a second appraisal. And then we work with our Realtor to present the two appraisals, and if there's some commonality, then we have some opportunity to ask for them to reconsider a price reduction. I ask, I suggest that because I don't, the risk of losing the property would be real for not moving it. We would, Comerica has other buyers, and they could move on. So which, if it happens, it happens, but this is a strategic opportunity for us, so that would be my recommendation. Our Realtor is here to field any questions of council. And that is my brief presentation. I figure a lot of the information is going to come out through discussion. Mayor?
Open it up to council. I'd like to hear from the.
So through the chair. I was shocked at the appraisal. And it has given me a lot of pause with this project. I think it's a great project. I fully support making sure that our fire department is healthy and safe. I am just struggling with the purchase price of $1.3 million, based on the fact that we had an appraisal come back at $800,000. So tell me a little bit more about how it would work if we approve a purchase agreement tonight? And realistically, how much do you think we can negotiate down to get closer to that purchase price or that appraisal price?
I will actually invite our broker up here to talk a little bit about his experience with that topic. One thing I want to note that I've, it struck me about the appraisals, and they begin their appraisal report with a summary of conditions and assumptions. And one of their assumptions that affected their price is, in the purchase agreement, there's a restriction. They have restricted the city from redeveloping or reusing this property competitively. So we are not allowed to, should the city sell it, we're not allowed to sell it for a financial purpose, a financial institution. And so since the site itself is constructed as a bank, and we're not able to sell that to a bank, that could devalue the value of the asset. And that is something I was reading, paying extra attention to before the meeting. So that's something, in that example, I'm curious how much that influenced it. That's a follow-up question I have for the appraiser. And if we order the second appraisal, I would ask them how they would consider appraising this property, should there be no restriction on it.
And I would follow up on that, because I think the covenant deed says that it's only a 12-month covenant. It's a 12-month non-compete redevelopment clause. After that, we can do whatever we want. And it's a two-year restriction for marijuana. So I think I would want the appraiser to take those conditions into account, the fact that this isn't a permanent impairment of the use of the property.
Correct, that's the same, that's the issue I took with it. And actually, that's the first note in the appraisers' report and conditions that they factored in to the value. So with that restraint, then yes, that could factor into market value, because it is a bank. And if we can't resell it for a financial purpose, then that could factor it in. But I would like to invite Matt, if he could come up here and just talk a little bit about this kind of experience, where, you know, we can come back and we can talk about the ability to close, but we can also demonstrate multiple appraisals that could give us that opportunity to have that opinion with Comerica.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Basically, when we go under contract, if we approve the purchase agreement, we're allowed a due diligence period. That due diligence period is 60 days. And that gives us basically the option to explore pricing, other appraisals, whatever we want to do. And it's our ability to cancel the contract at any time with no recourse, our ability to renegotiate and ask for concessions. So that 60 days gives us a free window to really figure out if we want to buy the property or not, and doesn't have any obligation or any penalty for canceling.
Through the chair, are we in that 60-day period right now?
No. You have to sign the purchase agreement. They have to sign the purchase agreement.
Okay.
And then you're, you have an execution date, basically.
Okay. Point of clarification, the purchase agreement, are we beholden to a certain dollar value, or can we negotiate that down?
We can negotiate it down.
Okay.
Now, they can say no, and then we still have the opportunity to buy it for $1,325,000. Or they can say yes, based on the appraisal and other information we may give them, to come to a lower price.
And if they say no, we also have the option to terminate and walk away?
Exactly, and retain our deposit.
I like that part.
I like that part, too.
The cost that you could incur would be, if you got another appraisal, that's on us. Any type of due diligence investigations would be on us, and that money would not be recoverable.
If we got another appraisal, would we base that appraisal on... How do we feel as if, I mean, we would need another appraisal, but would we base that appraisal on what we want to use it for? Or would it still be based on the fact that it's a bank? Or the property?
It's my opinion, we would base the appraisal on the zoning, not necessarily a bank branch. So we would find more like-kind parcels that are zone-similar that would be more applicable than just a bank branch. One of the comments I think the appraisal made is that bank branches are becoming more common on the market, and their value is going down. Well, if we find a property that, for instance, the property on Woodward that was Tim Horton's, I know Woodward is not necessarily comparable to Nine Mile, but that has a similar zoning, and that recently sold for $2.5 million. And they don't, they didn't take into account that. They just looked at specifically bank branches.
Through the chair, how, in your professional opinion, knowing that you don't have a crystal ball, how likely do you think our success is with renegotiating? If we get another appraisal and it comes back still lower, maybe we get the price up. Maybe we don't get it to 1.3. How like, how much do you think Comerica is really going to work with us on that price?
I think it's a high likelihood.
Why do you think that?
That's a good question. So Joe's better at timelines than I am, but this has taken quite a while. They do not move quickly. And for them to stop the process, go back to the market, find another buyer, agree to a price, go through another contract, go through another due diligence, and then close is a monumental task for someone like Comerica. So I think that taking a less price for a close would be a likelihood. The real question is how much? And I can't really answer that. I could give an opinion, but it's just going to be a negotiation. And if the other appraisal comes back similarly, then we have more ammunition to get a lower price.
So, Joe, what would be contingent on what happens tonight? What would be the timeline for the additional appraisal, do you think?
This appraisal took four to five weeks, which is a little longer than typical. So, you know, past appraisals have been anywhere between three and five weeks. So I would expect the same thing. You're probably looking at mid-September if we were to order it up this week. Typical appraisals, you know, between 2,500 and 3,500 for a limited appraisal like this. So a small risk there. What I would have to do is get, find three proposals, or three competitive, and then we would have to, I would ask them to value it without that land restriction. would have to, I would ask them to value it without that land restriction. I think that biases things a little bit.
And would we be able to offer, you know, in exchange for, you know, we get the appraisal, we get a lower price, are we able to, could we close sooner or end the due diligence sooner or, like, in order to entice them to something? Is that an option? Are we allowed to do that?
That's exactly the conversation we had. So if we are going to get them to agree to a lower price, we have to be prepared to close. So we have to have our funding mechanism in place because what, that's going to be their first question. They're going to say, if we agree to this, when can you close? And it can't, the answer can't be, well, we have to get this other approval, or we have to do this. They're going to say, we'll go do that and then we'll talk about it.
So through the chair, I, I'm a little bit more comfortable with the idea forward with a purchase agreement. I am still hung up on the purchase price, and I don't understand the mechanism that we would know the purchase price in this whole equation. Would it come back to council for us to know about it? Or are we basically saying, go forth and purchase it and just do your best to negotiate it down?
That is what you'd be, you'd be authorizing me to go negotiate it, push for a reduction. And what I would do by order of my own conduct with you professionally is give you the opportunity to review what I was able to negotiate or what I wasn't able to negotiate, and then I'll follow your lead. But this authorization enables me to respond quickly if we're able to get a meaningful concession out of them. And we do want to strategically acquire it, and then I need to close. To Matt's point, they're not going to want to wait for the next two to four weeks, for example. That's the enticing piece of it.
So through the chair, I'm, I'm probably more comfortable than some of my colleagues on, you know, I'm willing to pay a little bit more than the appraisal. It's just, this is a parcel that doesn't come up very often for us to have this opportunity. And so I'm, I'm a little bit more open, I'm a little bit more open to what might be possible. But I really do hope that we can work something out because that, the appraisal really is sort of a surprise. And I, I don't believe that this appraisal is accurate. I don't think that it is. I think that this appraisal was not thoughtfully done. I don't think it took into account some pretty critical things. And I'm hoping that we can prove that. I'm hoping we can prove that out. And so, you know, I'm, for me, the, my overriding desire in this is to be the entity that controls the outcome of a very important parcel. That there's, there's value in this that's not just cash value, that's not just market value of land and fixtures. It's the fact that we could have a good parcel to enable the city to accomplish what it needs to accomplish, to give us the flexibility to accomplish that, and to also control the outcome of the parcel. Because if something, if, if a public safety facility doesn't come through, if it doesn't happen for whatever reason, we can still be in control of what happens on that parcel. We can ensure that what goes there is to our and the community's satisfaction as opposed to it being privately owned. So I find that there's value in us owning it that adds to, for me, a comfort level of, you know, paying a little bit more than an appraisal to own it, but not more than I absolutely have to. I mean, I, I still really want to stress that we have to fight hard on this.
That's 100% understood and agreed on that. I want to use Matt, Matt had referenced the, I see a connection here in points. So Matt made a point about the Tim Hortons property on Woodward and its sale. And councilman, you made a point on the, one of the benefits of site control. The property on Tim Hortons is trying to be redeveloped into a car wash. And I, I won't speak on the prospects of that redevelopment, but that is a good point because I have heard that the community doesn't want a car wash on that property. So that gets to the point of some influence on site control that the city has on a well-positioned property near Hilton East Nine Mile. Couple of connections there.
Through the chair. True, because I wouldn't want a car wash there either. Through the chair. So I was also surprised at the assessed, at the, not assessed, the appraisal. But interestingly enough, when I look at the state equalized value, it's $838,000. So it's not all that far off from the appraisal price. But like you, councilman, it's a strategic piece of property. I was expecting to pay more. I wasn't expecting to pay that much more. I think this is a great opportunity for us to go back to them and talk about the fact that this property is overpriced and we should have a significant reduction in the cost. I think it's to our benefit that we really have more of the control. If it proceeds not to the point where we're comfortable spending 1.3 million on the property, we can pull the plug. But at least we have the opportunity to continue to move forward. And again, it'll be a piece of property if we choose to go with that, you know, if we're forced to go with that full amount, it would be a piece of property that's within the city's And regarding the second topic, I think we can phrase it to allow for the amount to be up to a certain amount that we're comfortable with. Maybe we're not comfortable right today at 13, 1.3, maybe we say it's 1.2, but that's a conversation for the next topic. But I see no reason why we can't, I see no reason why I can't support this item tonight for us to move forward.
So through the chair, is, is that accurate, that we can put like a stipulation in? No?
That would be changing the purchase agreement and the terms that are listed. It would be a not to exceed 1.325, and the city manager understands that we will order a second appraisal.
I'm not talking about this item, I'm talking about the next, the OPEB.
Oh.
I'm talking about the agreement to borrow 1.325 out of OPEB.
So you're saying?
That number doesn't have to be. We could, well, we can wait till we get to that topic, but.
Well, they're kind of inextricable.
They are, yeah, they are, they really are. If we're not comfortable with a price of 1.3, we could say we're only going to allow ourselves to borrow 1.2 or 1.25 or, that has no impact on our agreement in this item, this first item.
So, Joe, can you remind us as to why we felt that it would be the 1.3 in the first place? Just so that we could secure the property or, just give me a refresher?
Actually, originally, it was $1,350,000. And then we got a price reduction because there's some very large safes in there that were cost prohibitive to remove. And what?
Sorry, let me correct you. We first made an offer of 1.25. They counter-offered with 1.35. And then what you're saying is happening. But originally, we made the offer of 1.25 based on what, what you suggested that we offer.
Correct. You're correct. There were, there were competing bids, so there were other people making offers on this. And the seller knew that we had been diligently pursuing this property for some time, and so they countered at a price that they thought was fair and that we could agree to, and they could tell the other buyers that they've selected us. So it was a negotiation process.
So even with that negotiation process and them coming up with the 1.3, we still think that we can get them down to something?
Yeah. So in a typical transaction, there's a lot of this negotiations that'll go back and forth. Let's say you were buying the building to use it. You might come back and say, well, the roof wasn't as good as we thought it was, the environmental conditions weren't as good as we thought they were, the parking lot. So there could be other issues in a normal transaction that would be used to deduct the purchase price. In this case, we're using market conditions and essentially financing to lower the price.
And would the price, to either of you, would the price include, the lowering of the price include some of the findings that you found when you went through the walkthrough regarding the property, like the safes and things like that, the fact that?
That's where they already factored that in. I raised that as a counterpoint, and they reduced their price $25,000. I'd requested 50, but they moved. So now we would bring this second point back to Matt's point, setting the market conditions. And if we have two appraisals and they are grouped similarly, I think that gives us a reasonable, a reasonably good argument. You have to think of that, too. If they walk away from us and go to a different seller, they know the, they know the value of these appraisals, right? And so they're going to have a tougher negotiating point, especially since this is public.
You suggested that 50,000 because you knew that would be about the cost to?
It was a reasonable guess, man, and what I thought I could get from them, to be honest with you, and it got 25, so.
Through the chair, Joe, could you just tell us what you estimate the demolition costs are going to be in total?
Yeah, at this point, 50 to 75,000. The safe is, is an extraordinary condition. Walking at the amount of concrete and wait for that safe likely will require a crane or something to help us actually locate that, relocate that. And we did learn through the process, there are specialist niche firms that work solely with banks on decommissioning banks. So we will, I'm waiting for pricing.
And there's a follow-up on that. Do these firms that work with, is there a possibility that there's enough recoverable value in some of these assets that it could be, if not a fully revenue contract with the demolition firm? Some component of the cost of demolition would be recovered?
I think we should absolutely look into that. There's substantial assets within the building that still could be repurposed or resold that I think they could benefit from.
I mean, unless they're planning to sell the vault to be used as a vault again, then it will be scrapped. And there's a lot of scrap value. Right now, scrap prices are high. I'm getting a lot of money in my day job from scrapping. So I'd like to think they could recover something on letting them take and scrap those.
There's, there's an option to do that. It's just, from my experience, the safe is filled with concrete, so to deconstruct it, get the concrete out, it's, it's a sizable process that.
Not as much metal, yeah, as you would think. Got it. Good to know for when I'm next breaking into a bank.
So through the chair, let's talk about that negotiation process again, Joe, because I trust you somewhat. I would need some assurance that this will come down substantially, like a million 310 isn't going to cut it. I don't know that a million 295 is going to cut it. We have to get, we have to get this moving in the right direction. What does that, what does that look like to you? And in terms of how we, how we decide as a council body, obviously, the decision will be out of our hands at that point. It'll just be you as our negotiator. So if you can't get that number down, what happens? How do you, how do you tell us? And how do we make a decision? Or do we make a decision? Do you make the decision?
Well, I would bring you in like I would on any serious thing and do two-on-twos probably, speak with the mayor individually. And I would give you the results of both appraisals, summarize the results of what Comerica is or is not willing to do. And then it's an execution point. Then you have the decision to have me come back. That doesn't mean Comerica's going to tolerate that time, but that could be a decision. Decision one is bring it back publicly and see if they'll wait two more weeks or whatever the time might be. Or you just are comfortable as a group, and I understand the will. Or you're comfortable walking away, and I understand that will.
Through the chair, we wouldn't necessarily have to wait two weeks. There would be, for something of this nature, we could call a special meeting, 48-hour notice, et cetera.
When was the last time this council called a special meeting?
Oh, God, council back in 2008 and 2009, they were calling them all the time.
It's happened, so.
It's happened.
Oakland County, Oakland County, our mayor became Oakland County Executive.
That's true. Oh, yeah.
Special meeting.
Yeah, when I make, became mayor for a day.
That's when everything went downhill.
Yeah, that's when everything went downhill.
My question is, because of, because there's more that we would like to know and because we're kind of going on chance here, what do you feel as far as your professional opinion that, what's Comerica's patience level, you think? Or how, what's, what's the feel?
You're not dealing with an individual, so you're dealing with, you're dealing with spreadsheet numbers. And it's based on their, they call it a book value, and they don't want to get less than that book value, and they're not going to show what their book value is. If I had to guess, if we had an appraisal that came back at a million dollars, a second appraisal, and then we showed them both those appraisals, we could, we could comfortably, in my opinion, get $100,000 off the purchase price. So we'd be at a million 250. I think to dream that you could get below a million dollars would probably be not a good exercise and a waste of everyone's time. That's in my opinion. It's not anything that I have numbers to base it on. It's just trying to be honest with everybody and upfront that, you know, these appraisals are individuals that are putting numbers together and grabbing different data points and making their own conclusions. So it can be, they can be very different.
And in your opinion, are they pushing to move this quickly?
No. They don't move quickly on anything.
Okay. All right. Any other questions to the council?
Well, I want to touch on something that Joe said. Joe, you said you expect demolition to cost 50 to 75,000. We had had a conversation, I don't know if, I know I haven't had the conversation with other council members, but we had had the conversation about doing deconstruction, which is a little more costly. Is that still something that we can consider? Where we can disassemble the building and use a lot of the parts and components like the bricks we can utilize in our parks or something, you know? But rather than just everything end up in a landfill, that's kind of not the Ferndale way.
It's all subject to time and patience and money. But, I mean, I wouldn't rule that out, you know? That's not a point, I wouldn't get to that process until we.
Well, until we own the, own the property, we, yeah, we don't have to have the conversation.
But I think that that's, I mean, the material of the building was well-maintained, is in good condition, so.
Yeah, it's.
There's a lot of reusable materials there, for sure.
I move to approve the purchase agreement with Comerica Bank to acquire the real property located at 1,000 East Nine Mile, up to the amount of 300, $1,325,000, and to authorize a city manager to.
Just what starts the due diligence period?
Do I say that, though? Or just to execute? Because I don't, to execute the purchase agreement through the due diligence period. as submitted by the city manager.
Does it matter that we have consideration in the regular agenda instead of putting approve?
No, we have to approve. We can't consider, we're considering it now.
Considering it now?
Yeah.
I will, I will second that, okay.
With the understanding that you're going to work with Comerica to get that price lower.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McColsky?
No, but with comment.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Through the chair, is it okay for me to make my comment? I fully support this project. This is me just being so uncomfortable with expensive things. When I bought my house for $100,000, a million years ago, I was a train wreck even then. I knew I could afford it. I have some real hangups on it, and the discrepancy between the appraisal value and the purchase price is just something that mentally I can't get over. And I trust you, Joe. And I really want you to hammer these people as much as you possibly can to get that price point down. But I still just mentally couldn't get over that hurdle.
All right, we are moving on to, we'll stay where you are. We're moving on to item, regular agenda, item 8B. Consideration of the resolution, excuse me, a consideration of the resolution authorizing an inter-fund loan to the general fund from the OPEB trust fund in the amount not to exceed $1.3 million. 1.325.
Yes, Mayor, Council, the director, Finance Director is unable to attend tonight, Phil Woodfield. But we've kind of set up the mechanics of this loan, so, in the presentation. So for now, I will just pull up the recommendation. So what is, what was presented earlier tonight was a review of the city's OPEB trust fund. And we kind of defined what that trust fund is, how it's a separate legal entity from the city, and how this is a loan that's structured to loan the city $1.325 million, which would enable the city's general fund to purchase this without having to burden itself from coming up with that amount of cash upfront. And also with the benefit of taking out a loan, not from a private bank, but from another public fund that we oversee. And so in this case, there's a ten-year term sheet in the packet that includes 4% annual interest. The principal and interest payments are well-defined. If approved, this is the agreement that we are bound to, that will, others will be reviewing on an annual basis. The city, if we do close, does have the, and we do successfully issue bonds, should initiative be passed, we do have the opportunity also to pay off this loan with the proceeds of those bonds within one year of approval.
Through the chair. So the one, so our debt service is going to be 163,360 and 50 cents. Obviously, that's coming from the general fund. And I think, and I'm kind of springing this on you because this isn't something I've talked to you about, so I apologize, Joe, I don't like to do that to you. But I would like for us to talk about, not at this moment, but as we move into the budget preparation cycle, what kind of cost efficiencies? What kind of things can we do to show the community that we are going to absorb this, not as a net increase to our general fund, but as a, we will, we will find out how to make this work and look for some efficiencies, some reductions to sort of offset the hit of this, of this debt service.
So if I'm hearing you, I'm hearing our goal would be to target $163,000 in efficiencies to offset the annual payment.
That is correct.
Understood. It's a good target.
I think so.
I move we approve the resolution authorizing an inter-fund loan to the general fund from the OPEB trust fund in an amount not to exceed 1.325 million, to be repaid over a term of 10 years at an interest rate of 4% using level debt service as submitted by the Finance Director.
I'd like to second with a edit for the purpose of purchasing 1,000 East Nine Mile.
That's a great point. The suggested action does not contain the address, so that is a great point. So my motion, I amend my motion to include for the purchase of 1,000 East Nine Mile, Ferndale, Michigan, 48220. Good catch.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
McColsky?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Work hard for us, Joe. Item 8C, consideration of the merchant processing agreement for parking pay stations with Passport Parking.
Looking for Bruce. Give us one moment. Bruce Campbell, our Director of Parking, will give this presentation.
Not that Bruce Campbell. On a lighter note.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. I think this will be brief. This is a consideration for an amendment to an existing contract that we have with our mobile service payment provider named Passport. We are, this is an effort to reduce costs by switching from a company called First Data. Our current kiosk merchant provider is called First Data. We've done an evaluation comparing rates between First Data and a proposal from Passport. And we're asking for approval for this agreement that you should have in your packet. The rate that Passport is proposing is 2.9% plus a 13 cent per transaction with an additional 7 cents per transaction. With the effective rate for that, I'll go to my next slide. Hope if... Yeah, so the effective rate for that is, on an average transaction, we're looking at 27 cents per transaction as opposed to 55 cents per transaction, what we're currently paying First Data. So it's an effective rate of reduction from 20% to 10% per transaction. And we've estimated the annual savings for this at approximately $50,000. So we paid last year, I think, about $150,000 in credit card processing fees. That number will come down by approximately $50,000 over the course of a year. And it's pretty straightforward. This, you know, Joe has tasked us with looking for cost reductions across the board, and this is one of them that we wanted to bring to you for consideration and approval, hopefully.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
How does this affect the users? Are they getting the same discount?
No, we, so the city pays all the transaction fees. It doesn't affect the users.
So when I use my credit card...
You won't see it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Through the chair, indirectly, it affects users because now I can divert that 50,000 we would otherwise be giving them to resurfacing, which I really want to do. We have a lot of resurfacing work in our surface lots or other maintenance-oriented work that have been deferred for the last few years.
But it, the per tran, the customer using their credit card to pay won't see it, but to Joe's knowing... Well, yeah, we can use it for whatever it's, whatever's determined we want to use it for, or the council wants to use it for.
And through the chair, I mean, these numbers are incredible. This is, this is substantial. I mean, this adds up over all the transactions that happen every week. Are we confident that this won't affect the effectiveness of our system or, you know, reliability? That switching to this would have any effect on that? Whether it's for the user or for us, just the reliability of this stuff being processed effectively? Like, they're offering us a very low rate, which sometimes I think that's a red flag. I'm like, oh, boy, why are you offering, why are you able to offer me such a low rate?
Well, I will say, we went through a process for this over the course of the last year. We've gotten comparable rate quotes. The reality is, the 55 cents effective rate per transaction is a high rate. That, you know, we think that this is the lowest rate that we have, and it's an effective, I mean, it's, it's one of our current providers, but it's not uncommon, is what I say, what I would say. I've gotten similar quotes from other vendors. So, no, I don't think there will be a, a performance issue with, with this. And it's not an exclusive, so if we ran into performance issues, it's not an exclusive agreement where we couldn't make a change if we needed to.
So through the chair, are there any other fees besides the average transaction fee that we need to be aware of?
No, there are not with this vendor.
Through the chair, are there any thresholds that would increase our average fee per transaction?
No, there are not. The amendment had, these are flat fees and it's spelled out in the amendment.
Any other questions?
I move we approve the merchant processing agreement for parking pay stations with Passport Parking as submitted by the Ferndale, Park Ferndale Director.
Support. Johnson?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
McColsky?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work on this, Bruce.
Thank you.
We are now...
I like saving money.
Good news tonight. We are now coming to call to council, where I will defer to the city manager to, regarding department updates.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to quickly begin by commenting on credit, Bruce. It is not easy to find anyone at First Data who will actually respond to you. He has rested with them for a long time. This has been on our target list for a long time. And so I really appreciate it, and I love that white jacket. Michael has addressed the Dream Cruise. Chief Emery, you've addressed the Dream Cruise. Do you have anything else on behalf of the Police Department tonight? Assistant Fire Chief, anything on behalf of the Fire EMS tonight? All right, our DPW Director will give an exciting announcement about the EPA providing us some boots on the ground.
So we're going?
Copies of what you said. It's got to cut off because we got...
Oh, it's for one for all, one for each of us?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought it was a packet of one.
So this week, the Get the Lead Out program is our collaboration with the EPA that's going to start. We'll be talking more in general about the collaboration very soon, some updates. The first collaboration is the door-knocking campaign that's happening this week. It's taking place Tuesday and Thursday from 11 till 7. Staff will canvas blocks...
Chief, could you leave it in the mic, please?
Part of this is staff will canvas blocks performing internal inspections at homes. These inspections should take less than five minutes to perform. We hope to reach about 600 homes this week. Another door campaign, door-knocking campaign is taking place in September. EPA will supply 10 to 12 inspectors. They'll be accompanied on each block by city staff. This is the first in a series of efforts to fill in gaps in data throughout our system as part of this initiative. It will improve our understanding and ability to address blocks with higher concentrations of lead. Because we're filling gaps, we may not be on your block, but we will almost certainly be in every neighborhood eventually after we're finished with the second door-knock campaign. We're beginning tomorrow with Inman, Horton, Minerva, and Oak Ridge. And you'll notice that we will be beginning in the northeast quadrant of the city, and we'll be moving clockwise. I presented council with a tentative list of blocks that we'll be, we'll be looking at. As I mentioned, we'll be starting in the northeast, we'll be going around in a circle. We've got signs up on the first four blocks. And as we get a better gauge of how many blocks we're able to do and how many homes in a day, we'll start putting more and more signs out in front of that process. We put some stuff out on social media, so hopefully everyone will be expecting this. And, yeah, so that's really about it. I'm sure there'll be questions, but the signs do look like this, and they'll come out before we get to the block.
Through the chair, I have a quick question. How will workers be identified? Will they have name badges or anything?
Yep, EPA staff will have Ferndale vests, they will have identification badges, they'll have clipboards with the Ferndale logo on the back, and they'll be accompanied by city staff. City staff will be on each block that they're working on. So typically, there'll be three to four EPA contractors working with one city employee.
And through the chair, so this verification, this helps us in one way because this helps us fill in the sort of gaps in our data as we're getting closer to EPA final rule on lead and working on, you know, the true scale and extent of the work we're going to have to do. So the more of this we can fill in, the gaps in our data, the more, with the EPA, when we have to file our reports with the state and the EPA, you know, right now, gaps in the data, this is, I guess, more of a statement for the public, but gaps in our data have to be assumed to be lead unless proven otherwise. And so if we fill in more gaps, then we know how big or small the problem may be in certain areas, which helps us scale the, the speed and the total cost of our lead line replacement efforts.
That's correct. And then I'll mention, if we find lead on an internal verification that we did just by checking in with the resident, going in, looking at it, taking a couple of pictures and updating our data, that is one line that we do not have to do pothole verification that costs more money.
In addition to this, we're also expecting some website updates this month as well, some ordinance updates potentially.
Correct. The website actually has been reorganized. We've kind of reprioritized some of the subject headings, made some simplifications in an effort to make it a little more readable and a little more straightforward. We also have a self-reporting tool that should be out in a finished form within the next two weeks. And we expect to have a map update as well. Right now, there's a placeholder on the website for that map. We expect both of those to be complete, ready to go two weeks from today.
Through the chair, two things. One, who came up with the list of streets?
Jeff, the Lead Service Project Manager, myself, HRC, and EPA all collaborated to find areas in which we had gaps of information. We did avoid some areas that we know are very lead-heavy because we already have that data, so it wouldn't necessarily make sense to focus on those blocks.
Okay.
We tried to find areas where we didn't have a very good understanding or the ability to predict very accurately what the lead versus copper would be on that block.
Okay. And so this is strictly to identify the homes in these areas. It's not a commitment to do the work in the next year or two because we don't have that plan yet.
Correct. And, yeah, in all residence... Correct, and, um, yeah, and all residents should see the website. The website, um, does address that early on. Uh, it is important to mention that this is a ten-to-twelve-year program. Um, there are, we predict there's roughly four thousand. Um, and the pace that we would suggest, uh, that we can fund going forward would probably be around four hundred a year, which means it's a ten-year program to address four thousand.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that people were aware that, you know, they're visiting your home, oh, yep, you, you have lead. Okay, we're not coming out next year to replace it. It could be five, six, eight years, um, based on the money and the work schedule. That's-
That's true.
That'll be determined. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, and finally, this evening is just the city manager's office, so I want to thank all of the residents who did come out, uh, to see, uh, me and the team this Saturday at Jim's Community Corner. It was the first of a few resident education and engagement sessions I plan on offering with the team. So I'll be meeting with the seniors at the end of this month, and we'll also be, uh, trying our best to see if Michael will let us fit into some of these events that are coming up, uh, including the funky Ferndale Eye Fair, of course, our own Hilton Fall Fest, and the DDA Director was kind enough to invite me to, uh, sit in at one of the nine-nine-nine sessions coming up. So, it's important this information is out there. I'm also speaking with the library director to see if he's willing to allow us to put some of our, uh, poster boards that just kind of describe a little bit more about what this is, what's being proposed. So I expect to have more permanent installations of these, uh, poster board education materials at the library and at City Hall available for public view by next week, uh, through the duration of the next few months. And Mayor, without a cheer?
Yep.
Alright, so now we'll start with council. We'll start out with Councilman Pollocka.
I have nothing this evening.
Right, Councilmember Johnson?
I also have nothing this evening.
Pro Tim McColsky?
I also have nothing this evening.
Well, I have a little something. Okay. Uh, I just want to thank, uh, everyone, uh, who came out to, uh, the Meet the Mayor event at Martin Road Park. Uh, we had some great conversations. Um, thank you, James and, and DPW for coming out and helping us, and, and our Parks and Rec as well. I think that, uh, this is about reaching, uh, residents, one resident at a time, and, uh, the more we reach, the more we can get the word across as to why we feel that it's important that we have, uh, our recreational facility and our support, uh, as far as expanding DPW and, excuse me, uh, support expand, as far as expanding, um, our police and fire, uh, services. Uh, when I think about that, I think about, uh, as I'm talking to these residents, about what our, uh, police and fire deserve. I've been on the tours, I've toured the police department, I've toured the fire department, on more than one occasion, the fire department. And for us to invest in, in their health and well-being so that they can continue to serve and work for us, uh, the way they do is something that I think we should all invest in. Uh, I've also spoken with parents and residents regarding the recreational facility. And whereas, uh, the recreational facility for me, uh, as a parent and with young children in the schools back when I moved here thirty years ago, uh, was, uh, really a saving grace for me. So to be able to invest in that and to have something that we can finally call our own is something that I'm getting, pushing the word. I'm getting the word out regarding that, and that, uh, I think it's a worthwhile investment. But again, council, when we decided, we decided to give the decision to the community, and we are all community members as well. So it is my hope that, uh, you'll get out to learn more about the Headley and the Charter Amendment proposal, ballot proposals, and that you will reach out to the organization, yesferndale.org to find out, find any information that you want to know about it, and, and, and come to the events that we will be having throughout the, the coming months to learn more about it and why you should support it, and just, uh, for us to have community conversations. So it's important conversations, and I plan to be at as many as I can be at, and I'm sure council, uh, will be at some of those events as well. So, any questions, you can always reach out to us, uh, individually or collectively as a council, and also to the campaign team for yesferndale.org, so. With that being said, I just want, you know, police and fire to know that I support, uh, their efforts. I'm grateful for what they do for us, and, uh, for them to be able to have, uh, a facility that is conducive to their needs is important. And then also, you know, I also have to pull a plug for our female firefighters and female police officers. We want to recruit and have a diverse police and fire force, then we need to have, uh, the amenities and the, the accommodations to serve them, so. With that being said, I call this meeting to order at, adjourn, I s, I have, I have to conduct other meetings, so I'm sorry. Adjourn at nine-ten, thank you.
You want to start all over?